Good to go. All right, I'll call the meeting to order, have the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Trustee Conner.
Here.
Trustee Herzak.
Here.
Mayor Patrick.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question brief for members of the community. As there are none, we will dispense with that. Report from the code enforcement officer. You have his, uh, his report. If you have any questions on it, I'll try to answer them if you do. You can see some of them are follow-up letters and... All set?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, here's my report. Happy holidays to all of you. What a wonderful crowd we had at our annual tree lighting and creative lights. Thanks to Sally Jarvis for organizing the lighted vehicles. Also like to thank the DPW crew for the beautiful decorations in Pawcap Park and the hanging decorations on the poles. Thanks to Mary and Juanita for helping to organize the event. And thank you to Duncan for the hot chocolate and for providing servers, who cheerfully handed out cups of cocoa. Thank you to Nikki Malinsky and Tricia Rye for setting up and running all the kids' activities, including the candy cane hunt, which has become an annual favorite. I would say, I don't know, we've done that for four or five years now, I think.
Yeah.
That's a lot of fun. And finally, a huge thanks to Santa, who always comes to share his joy with all the children. It was a long, long line of families waiting to get into the Champlain Meeting House to visit with Santa. And so I thank all of you for your patience. Oh, why when I wrote this, this hadn't happened? Well, we did have another holiday event last night. We met at the KFC parking lot and we went Christmas caroling. We didn't have too many people come, but we had a great time. We went around Oak Street and Maple and that neighborhood, and then we went to senior housing and sang there. It was really a lot of fun, and to make it even more picturesque, it started snowing. So, it was good. As was announced at a previous meeting, the village of Champlain has received the designation as an AARP age-friendly community. We will be focusing on making our community more livable for all ages, particularly in the areas of outdoor spaces, transportation, social participation, health, and communication. We realize that for many residents, transportation is a primary concern. For those who take the cart bus, there's been no place to sit for a while while waiting for its arrival. And I'm happy to announce that thanks to a request from county legislator Calvin Castine, Woodman of the World has purchased a bench for the village. After speaking with Kenny Drug officials, this bench has been placed in front of their store. Now bus riders will have a comfortable place to wait for their transportation and other people waiting for a ride. A longer-term goal is to have a bus shelter installed to protect riders from the weather. I wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Please remember that these days can be very hard for many people, who may be lonely or ill. Reach out to those around you who would enjoy a card, a short visit, or a plate of cookies. Brightening their day will also brighten yours. And Happy New Year. Thank you. Report from the trustees. Joel, anything?
Yep, um, I was at the fire meeting last month, the village fire meeting, and kind of went over some of the things that they were concerned about. We touched on mostly last, um, last meeting, obviously the water being the main issue, but that's kind of already in motion. Uh, but the only other thing that they requested and they asked for was a list of the locations of the fire hydrants in the village.
So I sent that to them?
Yeah, so they have it to them.
Yeah. I, did I send it to all of you too?
No.
Oh.
No, you showed it.
Would you like to have it?
You showed it to me.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind having that, Janet.
Yeah, after you mentioned that, I, I was able to get it from Mike and it's amazing how many hydrants we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like...
And that's, from what they said, that's all shared with all the shared services and all the other fire departments around, so we're on the big list, so... If there's ever a fire that we're not able to get to for some reason, then we'll be covered.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for going to that meeting and representing us.
Yeah, so they're, I mean, they're looking at building a new firehouse too, so they've got a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, yeah. It's exciting.
But that's it?
All right, thanks. Chuck?
One thing. We're gonna have, start up our game days again. We decide on January twenty-ninth, it's on a Sunday, two thousand twenty-three, from one to three P M. at the meeting house. So anybody's invited. Last year, we had a halfway decent turnout, but we're looking maybe to get a few more people involved and... It's a fun time for a few hours and people get to meet each other that maybe don't know each other and and just do something on a wintry afternoon, on a, on a weekend if there's not much going on. So that, again, that's January twenty-ninth, one, one to three, at the meeting house. Other than that, we don't have too much.
All right. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Nikki?
Okay, um, yes, we had our annual kids' Christmas craft day, um, last weekend. We had around eighteen children who participated and they each made three to five decorations. I had a few left over from last year, so they ended up making some of those. Um, and our candy cane hunt was fun, as always, and we had gorgeous weather for that day, so that worked out pretty good. Um, our next children's event is January fifteenth at one, and that is Pollination Be Informed. We have someone who, um, is a retired, um... She beekeeper, so she'll be coming and talking about what she used to do and hopefully she has some hands-on items. That's Julia's mom, so that's pretty cool that, you know, there's someone local that'll come up and, and talk about pollination, which is good for garden. So we'll talk, we'll follow up with it at another, um, garden planning meeting. And we'll discuss more.
You said the fifteenth of January?
January fifteenth.
What time?
One o'clock.
No, is that just for kids?
No, anyone can come, yeah, anyone can come.
And that's at the meeting?
At the meeting house, yes. And the village will be holding their annual house decorating contest. So be sure to have your lights on and your decorations up, December nineteenth through the twenty-first. Judges will make their way around the village during those three days, um, during the day and night to choose a first, second, and third place. That's it? And that is it.
Thanks, Nikki. Kim?
The only thing I have is, um, everyone received a copy of the addendum to the water board report. Just wanted to know if anyone had any questions on that. It, it was involving the payment of the thirty... Of course, I'm not gonna see the name off here. Thirty thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents. That was remaining from the project funds and the EFC released it. So we were able to lower our payment as well as the town's payment. So we went from two hundred, um, three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven, down to two hundred eighty-four dollars and... Two hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents. So it was, uh, it was good, it lowered our portion, lowered, lowered the town's portion quite a bit, so...
I guess as long as we're talking about it, would this be the time to talk about accepting the report? We haven't, we haven't done that yet.
No, I know.
I, I mean, it could take place right now, we could do that right now if you want.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with that.
So I don't, you probably, maybe you don't have the, the report with you, but, um, we have to write a, we have to write a letter accepting or disagreeing with the different points that the water board made. They've got some recommendations. Can you go over those, Kim, or do you want me to read them off the report? See, I've got, I've got mine right here.
Okay.
Let's see, addendum, this is the first one. So we talked about needing the meter at the wastewater plant, right?
Right, which will be done with the upgrades in two thousand twenty-three.
Correct.
So we just kind of kept it there on the...
Yep. And I'm just, I think I highlighted most of them, let's see.
I'm just trying to find my report.
And we did write to the fire district about letting us know about any fires.
Yeah, that, that's... We haven't been getting any notification on that, so they should be letting the water operator know, he in turn should be letting Mary and Juanita know, so that can be put into the spreadsheet that we have created. Because if we're not capturing that water, then the unaccounted, unaccountable water is just gonna keep going up and up and up.
Yeah.
So it is really important that we, um, that we get that information.
Okay, well, given that we have a new water operator and that's...
Right.
I just need to talk to them a little bit, I think.
Right.
Just a couple notes there. And other than that, aside from the money, which is straightforward, I don't know if there was anything else that was recommended for the village.
Let me see.
Oh, calibrate the, calibrate.
The well and distribution meters?
Yeah. Yeah. That is something that we've talked about before, but hasn't been done yet.
Right, so that's, again, some of, some of these things that, you know, just kind of keep rearing their head. The water tank maintenance agreement, which has been done, we just wanted to put it in there that it had been done.
And the capital purchases, we, we have agreed with that.
Right, um, because what we learned from doing the generator, um... I don't think we'll make that mistake again.
No, 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 no. Well, learn and learn, right?
Right, exactly.
It's all new.
It was, it was just, it, it was just a complete oversight, you know, we just didn't think of it.
Yeah.
And, um, so we put it in there and it's in the report, then it'll be, I think, more on people's minds when we have to do something for the water plant.
Right. Does the board have any other reaction to, to share?
No.
On this? All right, so you're okay with me writing a letter of acceptance? I think what I maybe should do with that calibration though is to say that we, it's in the plan, but I can't promise it would be this year. I just don't think we're necessarily gonna get that done.
That's fine.
We don't even know what the cost is gonna be.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else, Kim? Great, thank you. Okay, um, let's see, on to the report from the clerk treasurer.
Everyone has received their November expense and revenue reports. Looks like we're on target except for wages.
We're on target except for wages. Wages.
And which we already know. Sauer might work its way out, because we had to pay Woody.
Yeah.
His, his retirement is...
So is that why you're saying that?
His back vacation.
Huh?
Vacation.
Yeah, we had to, yeah, when we retired, so that was a big sum.
How much they can do about that?
They've been working pretty steady in the water, so...
Yeah, because we've got...
They've been doing hydrants and they're doing vaults now. So a lot of their days are...
In water.
Mm-hmm. Not much we can, we'll just have to
We'll just have to...
Travel when the time comes.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've had an additional employee there more than before. Which has to be, I mean, it, just given the situation. Does anyone have any specific questions on anything?
Uh, well, I just wanna congratulate Robert for passing this test.
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, good.
Yes, congratulations, Robert.
Congratulations.
Yay! Just...
Nice.
Oh, good. Great job, great job, yes. You did pass that test.
So this is the level two?
This is the two, yeah, and, uh, I don't know, I, yeah, that's, that's the two, the two A, yes. Yeah, that's fantastic.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we have invoices to be added to the warrant?
So we have additional invoices to the warrant of nine hundred dollars and seventy-eight cents for a total warrant of thirty-four thousand, nine forty-six, eighty-nine.
I have a motion to approve that?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Nothing?
So the reason why we have such big warrant too is this, last month we had retirement, this month we have perma workers comp, and next month we'll have, um, insurance. So, uh, but I've seen us pay, pay two in one month and...
That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot. That's a lot.
All right, if there are no questions, have roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Conner.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor Patrick.
Aye. A report from the superintendent. Mike Luchus report for everyone. Of course, they've been very, very busy. I'll give you a minute to look it over, because I don't know if anyone had time. Any questions?
Did he just do this this afternoon?
Yeah.
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 Like, 'cause I'm looking at the first water and the last, then I'm going, okay.
Yeah, we worked today with Ross Valve, yeah. Uh, you might notice at the bottom that he does bring up the need for a new pickup truck, which is something we're going to have to talk about. Sooner than later. They're, they're all aging, but the, the one is nineteen years old.
He mentioned that one last year.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna have to figure that out.
It seems like we just bought that pickup truck, I, it's hard to believe it was seven years ago. It just seems like we bought it.
Time just goes so fast.
Yeah.
Wow.
And one, one thing, I mentioned to Janet earlier, and we, I keep saying it, we gotta look for a new lawnmower. We were supposed to get boats, and we never...
I know, 'cause they keep putting band-aid on the band-aid and...
I know.
One of these days, I know, I know, one of these days it'll cost us...
Eventually it's gonna bite us.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be left with nothing.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if, I don't know what the condition is, but maybe it's something we could put in, in, half of it in reserve, and then, you know, just to start saving for it. I don't even know how much they cost.
Well, I said, we need to have, you know, an idea what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
What, um, what size is the one that we have now?
It's that blue one, right?
So it's more of a commercial?
Yeah, it's a small, small...
Small tractor.
Yeah.
Yeah. It came from Drago's.
Yeah, well, that's something else that I'll, I'll skip to start looking at. Okay, um, correspondence?
Um, correspondence from Lynn McCarty, two codes officers, regarding Ten Kane Street. Correspondence from Jennifer Shorm requesting wastewater credit.
Okay, so, um, under new business, um, water rates, um... I think I brought this up briefly before. The town water rates that we charge the town are currently six dollars and twenty-five cents. We are, um, we are saving some money on our loan repayment, and then we also are receiving more money on the operation and maintenance, just because the costs have gone up, but also the town now has a larger percentage of EDUs. I had mentioned the idea, but I don't have everyone's input yet, that mentioned the idea of, of decreasing the town rates by twenty-five cents, which would bring it down to six dollars, just because their costs have really increased. That would generate, uh, about twenty-seven hundred dollars less income for us. So twenty-seven hundred. We don't have to do that, I'm just thinking that it might help them out a little bit. Their costs have gone way up. But I need to know how you, what you...
I just don't like the idea of costing us more money for the village residents, because we're gonna decrease theirs.
Well, ours would still be at five seventy-five.
It's not going to change our way.
You just said if we'd, if we'd be getting less money.
Well, we, we...
From the town.
From the town.
Yeah, but...
So we'd be getting twenty-seven hundred less, but we are getting, uh, we are saving a total of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five when you add the reduced loan repayment and the increased O and M.
Yeah, that's, that's a one-year thing.
Well, no, the, the, the O and M for the town, unless we suddenly take a huge jump in the village, which
I don't see...
I don't see happening, their O and M is always going to be big.
The total O and M was around forty-nine thousand, if I were remembering it right.
Yes.
When we first started this project, the O and M was thirty thousand.
And that was just an estimate.
And that was an estimate.
So they've gone from thirty thousand, which they couldn't afford to pay in one payment, they had to break it into two payments. And now they're up to, well, they went to the forty-nine thousand.
So they, yeah, they're, they're, so their percent, let's see, um, yeah, for the O and M, the increase on the O and M was nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight.
For the town, yeah.
For the town. But it, it's, you know, we're, we're working here together, so if you feel that six twenty-five is where it should be, or if you think, oh, we'll take it down ten cents, I just picked twenty-five because six dollars isn't even amount. But it does generate twenty-seven hundred less for us.
Yeah, I don't know, I have about twenty-five cents, in my opinion, but...
Would you consider any, or do you think it just should be left at six twenty-five?
I may consider something, but not twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five cents?
Or twenty-five cents, yeah.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on it?
I don't have a problem with the twenty-five cents. They're, they're going to have to raise their rates to their people. I feel bad for people in those town districts.
Yeah, they're going to raise, their, their, their plan is to raise the rates by a dollar. So they tack on to our six twenty-five, they just about double it with what they collect for their expenses. And they're going to have to tack on a dollar. Increase it by a dollar to pay these increased costs. I don't, I don't know.
I'm just concerned, because we're gonna have to be increasing our water rates next year. So, uh...
It's true.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree with Chuck. I mean, twenty-seven hundred dollars is, I mean, that could be the lawnmower. But it's a difficult decision. I feel like there, there has to be some sort of middle ground. But I'm not quite aware of what that might be yet.
Like a, a, maybe a reduced amount of ten cents, or...
Yeah, eh, ten cents, or, I don't know.
They have to set their water rates tomorrow night.
I know, I know, I talked to the supervisor today. Um, I told him it would be a discussion point, but...
I, I think we have to make a decision tonight.
Yeah, we do.
In, in fairness to the town.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can, one of you wanna make a motion?
So it, it, just to, to clarify, so it, it affects the, the rate that the town pays the village for the water that the town gets from the village?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, yeah. So basically, we're in the water selling business.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so then, where does that, where does our water go for them, how far do they move it?
Where, where is the water District Six? Uh, it goes down Route eleven, goes down the Ridge Road. It goes up to the border. It goes on the Hayford Road. Eaton Lane thing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a...
That's about it, yeah.
That's about it.
So there's a small number, uh, really, they're, they're... So any of the businesses that are in those districts, and when they redid their EDU calculations and redid their policy, some of those businesses got, small businesses got got a huge surprise.
Yeah, they must have, if they have several EDUs.
And so they're, the town's fees are going up a large margin because of what?
They are paying more of the operation and maintenance of our water plant, because they're, that's based on percentage of users, and their, their percentage has gone up. And, um, so they're paying more for that. And then the loan payment for them has also increased. I'm not counting that thirty thousand from EFC, because that's a one-time thing. So their loan payment has also increased, and that comes out of their, their, the money that is paid with, uh, EDU charges.
So the town's growing, they're having more people getting water, so they pay more for sewage.
No, they're not growing.
Unfortunately, they're not.
They did, that would actually really help them.
That was the, that was the...
The intention.
The intent, yeah, of putting the water out there, but they haven't had a lot of new business.
I think it's going to pay off, I really do.
Yes, in the long run.
It's gonna take probably ten years, it's been five. I do think it's going to pay off.
And it is, they're trying to market things.
Yeah, market things, businesses on the Route eleven corridor, I really think it's going to be successful, but it takes time.
Yeah, none of these things happen overnight.
No.
Nothing does.
So I was just going to the water board report, just to let you know. So if, if you, we're looking at the water report, water board report on page fourteen, that is the summary of everything for this year, so... And that, that report was based on the three hundred and fourteen thousand dollar loan repayment. The town's portion seventy point seven percent, and the village was twenty-nine point thirty percent. Next year, their payment, next year, the loan payment will go up to three hundred, nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, next year it's gonna go up to three hundred and twenty-four thousand. So if the town isn't bringing in more customers to bring in more revenue for their water, I don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, these are huge, these are...
It's going to become unaffordable.
These are huge, huge, huge payments.
Yeah.
And there is no more money, the money, the money is gone, they release that last portion and they're done.
That's a huge burden on these, um, particularly these residents. But we do need, we need a motion, just so...
I made a motion that we reduce the water rate to the town by twenty-five cents.
And a second? So if there's no second, we're going to let it drop. Leave it at six twenty-five, so, no second? Okay, it's gonna, it sounds like it's going to say six twenty-five, that's, that's fine, I just wanna make sure I'm reading the group rate. Okay, all right. Okay, amendment to agreement, that is, just a minute here. Just have to get my paper here. So, um, this is from our engineers, and uh, this is an amendment to the agreement, it's an increase of seventeen thousand five hundred, and this increase is due to DOT requiring soil borings be performed. And also, there is a five thousand dollar increase to the funding assistance line to continue with any project funding needs and future grant applications. So we need to approve this amendment. Could I have a motion to approve it? And a second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, I will sign that tomorrow. Oh, it is seven o'clock, it's time for the public hearing. May I have a motion to close the regular session?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, we are currently in a public hearing about the building code. Just for the, for the public's understanding, um, the building, construction, and fire safety is governed by New York State, and the uniform code is applicable in every municipality in the state except in New York City. So every local government must adopt a local law that provides for the enforcement and administration of the uniform code within its boundaries, that is what we are doing now. We have no one from the public here to speak on that. So, do I just close the public hearing then? We don't make a decision at it, right?
No, you, no, you can close the public hearing.
So since no one is here, we met the requirement to hold a public hearing, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and a motion to open our regular session? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, we have a wastewater credit. I think these are all out of order now. A hose was left on outside this property, leaked onto the lawn, Superintendent Joliker can confirm that this water did not enter the wastewater system. So according to various calculations, the sewer credit would be fifty-two dollars and eighty cents. It does fit our guidelines, so may I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Um, I believe I gave you a print.
You need to approve with the, uh, adoption of that lo, new local law, because that has to be in, stuff.
That has to be done by district board first.
Yeah, that's right, okay, I don't have it in front of us, the actual law, but. I mean, we discussed it already.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been discussed, it had to be a public hearing.
The building code.
Yeah, the building code. All right, may I have a motion to adopt that local law?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would like to go on record, though, saying that our code enforcement officer worked very hard on, on adjusting that to our own code, spent a lot of time on that, he did a great job. We sent it to our lawyer who agreed that everything was in order, so I'd like to thank him publicly for that work. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for reminding me of that. We received a grant earlier this year from the Robert Wood Foundation to be part of our children's garden, and have not ordered anything using that money yet, so I'm suggesting that we get a small garden storage shed. And I sent you, I believe you all have a picture of that. Uh, the cost is about one thousand two hundred. And let's, let's get a motion on the floor so we can discuss it.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
All right. This is, um, we could, we could store some of the supplies down there, some, some of the, you know, the potty and soil, it can be locked. I think it would be really handy. I believe the picture even showed that you could set up a, like, a table or something in there, I suppose. We only had a couple of kids and you were doing one of the little garden lessons, they could actually be in there. What do you all think?
I'm just wondering, is it big enough, that's the one that you're looking at?
Yeah, I was, um, I picked one that was a little bit smaller because I wasn't sure if during the winter it would need to be moved, because the garden is down by the river.
Right.
So I thought maybe it shouldn't be too big.
Oh, seven by seven, that's.
More storage than.
Is storage.
Yeah.
The pots and the, the different.
As long as it can be big enough, you know.
Did you see that other one on the end, the fourteen ninety-two one, it says windows, skylights, and shelving?
Yeah, that's fifteen hundred, would that be better?
I don't know if you need skylights, well, it depends on what you're using them.
But I'm just thinking, you know, the, the shelving, you know, I'm just.
Shelving would be handy. We have, we have enough money for it.
I mean, it's an eight by ten.
No, this is through Amazon?
Uh, this, this, yeah, but I, but I could look, easily I could look up, you know, lifetime or who, who the companies are and see what they. I just did Amazon because it was easy.
But I think something with shelving would probably be better.
I think you're right, it would be very, more useful than, otherwise we'd have to put it.
I, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of purchasing it, but I'm just wondering if, when would we need it, we won't need it probably till spring anyway.
Right.
Right.
So there may be something less expensive on sale come springtime. A lot of times these go on sale.
Right, but we have the money.
Yeah.
You have it, doesn't matter, we don't have to spend it.
Well, you know, I'm going to probably reapply for this grant, we usually get this grant. So I really would like something purchased before I reapply.
Okay.
Uh, I think that application is probably in February or March.
How much is the grant for, I'm sorry?
It was twenty-five hundred.
Okay. And is it something that we wanna put there permanently, or something that we can move around?
No, you can't.
I think we'll have to move it around because of the water or the ice.
No, if you can put it on something that can be movable, like a platform with, that may be, I don't know, do we have, uh, like forks on our tractor? That they can get underneath with forks?
Yeah.
To, to move it around. So you, the platform would be something extra.
Right, you could look for a platform, Janet, as well.
What's that?
You could look for a platform as well.
Yeah, I, I think you're gonna need something like that.
Well, Chuck, do you wanna look that up, that information up?
Sure, I can.
And bring it to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that would be helpful.
And look for a shed with shelving, that would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, something similar to.
And anything else you might think of, Nikki, cause you're the one who's really led this whole effort in terms of the classes and. Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go online and, uh, maybe.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, shelving would be nice.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, we'd have to buy shelving and put it in there, I think, yeah.
Then how would you, I mean, if it's like a resin building or something, how are you supposed to?
How do you attach it?
Well, they, they have, a lot of them probably have like a, you know, things that you can put in there, they're, they're designed that you can actually put shelves in there.
Or something, yeah.
Maybe it's made for it, it's already made for it.
Yeah, it's already made for that building, yeah.
Yeah.
What other items, maybe like water and pans or cupboards and such?
Yeah, and you know, some, some lightweight shovels or rigs or.
Yeah, like a, you can.
Stash of those.
Mm-hmm.
Get those things to go on the wall, that you can just put your handles in there.
Yes, that's right, those things would be clip right in, that would be good.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that would be good, kinda, you know, not on the shelves, but that hook thing to put your.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got that in mind, well, I have it in my garage and my, my shed, I, I have all kinds of stuff to put stuff on.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, well, we'll just table this and come back in January.
Okay, sure.
There's more information. Okay, um, I would like a motion to close the regular session to go into executive session. A motion to close this regular session.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and a motion to go into executive session? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I'm going the other way.
Well, we could move the table in more, we're kinda, you know, we're.
That's okay. May I have a motion to go out of exec, executive session, please?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and a motion to go into the regular session?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, we have one vote to, to make publicly, can we have the motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion that we give our village employees that have been here through the COVID period, a five hundred dollar bonus for all their hard work and effort during those trying two-plus years as, as a recognition for their hard work and, and efforts.
May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I'd just like to say thank you for all your service, it's been, uh, it's been a rough time, and we managed to keep this office open, the garage opened, did all of, all of that hard work, and I'm just really proud of all of you, and this is something that we'd like to do for those who worked through the COVID years. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Melinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor Thatcher.
Aye. Um, there's no old business, uh, unless someone has something. We have a motion to adjourn. So move, and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
So.
Thank, thank you, everyone.
Yeah.